Five on our agenda, our agenda.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at nine oh two. Good morning, everyone. I'm Mark Sloan. Ms. Saltmarsh, would you kindly conduct the roll?
Darren.
You don't need to do a roll.
I want to do a roll so that we have a record. Darren Bailey, Bob Berlin, Kelly Cassidy.
Present.
Joby Cape. Lisa Daniels. Mitchell Davis. Yakov Delaney.
Present.
Latoya Hughes. Cheryl Ingram. Ari Jones. I think I saw Ari. Okay. Shoba Mahadev.
Here.
Scott Main.
Here.
Sharon Mitchell. Robert Peters. Mark Sloan.
Here.
And Ryan Spain. All right.
Kathy, Kathy, I'm here. I'm sorry. This is Joby Cape. And I am, I am here, but I missed the unmuting at the proper time.
We know how that can happen. Thanks, Joby.
My name is Darlisa Kendall, and I am also here.
Okay, are you here for one of the members of the task force?
I'm joining the meeting for the resentencing to understand what's going on with my son. So that's why I'm in the meeting. Thank you.
All right. And.
I thought it hurt someone else.
Mitchell Davis is entering. So. And we'll change him to present. All right, is there anybody who is a member of the task force whose name has not been called?
Chief Davis is here. Sorry for being late.
Thank you, chief. All right, we have nine members of the task force, Mr. Chairman, so.
Right.
Let us proceed.
Thank you very well. For those of you who are joining us for the first time, you should know that the task force is comprised of various aspects of the criminal justice by members of the various aspects of the criminal justice system. And it is an apolitical process. While both sides of the aisle are in fact represented. We have legislators, state's attorneys, public defenders, members of law enforcement, the Department of Corrections is represented as well as various advocacy groups to include the victims' rights groups, faith healers, and those of formerly incarcerated. We have an ambitious agenda. And so I'm going to stress that all of our speakers limit their remarks to no more than three minutes. At the three-minute mark, we're going to rudely cut you off. And that's only because we have so many interesting speakers, and we'd like to hear from all of them. Let me just take a moment to to stress the importance of the movement. And I'm fascinated by the thought of a codified resentencing procedure to the extent that it may afford our criminal justice system to conform with changes in the law as well as advances in mental health and medicine as well. It's not uncommon to resist change or innovation. And so the codification of a resentencing procedure is going to represent a departure from all that we commonly know in the criminal justice system. You may argue that the creation of certain specialty courts such as the Veterans Court is a tacit admission that the court system must move beyond the written letter of the law and consider factors that are noncriminal and consider the the equity in our sentencing process. And so while sentencing may be considered to be punitive or maybe punitive, according to our constitution, we also have an obligation to see that the sentencing is done so we can restore an offender to useful citizenship. I understand the rights and concerns of the victims. I've been a victim of a number of crimes myself, to include armed robbery. But I maintain the firm belief that people can change. And this resentencing process, I believe, will give the court system an opportunity to acknowledge that. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Saltmarsh.
Okay, we're going to have John Specker just review very quickly the rules for Zoom and then hand it over to Representative Cassidy and get the witness testimony started. So, John, take it away.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Resentencing Task Force Public Hearing. Just to pick up off of what the chairman said, if you are a witness, you will have three minutes for each testimony. Each witness will have three minutes to testify. We will alert you at the two-minute mark when you have one minute remaining. If you are a resentencing task force member and would like to ask the witness a question, please raise your hand. The raise hand function can be found in the reactions symbol at the bottom of your screen. If you are not on the witness list and not a member of the resentencing task force, please hold your comments until the public comment section at the end of the meeting today. And just to clarify that we will, we are recording this meeting, the resentencing task force is recording this meeting for record keeping purposes. If you have any issues with technology, please email me, john-specker@illinois.gov. If you are a call-in participant or have any questions you would like to ask, please chat, use the chat window to contact Ryan Kennedy or email markpowers@illinois.gov. If we have no questions, I will hand it back over to Rep. Cassidy, I guess.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, everyone. As mentioned, we're going to have a pretty strict timer going on so that we can hear from as many people as possible. So don't take it personally when I warn you, and then we'll have to cut you off. So without further ado, let's start with Shaneva McReynolds from F A M M. And I'm sorry, but I don't know the what, I can't spell that out for you. So maybe when you start, you can tell us about your organization.
Hello, good morning. I'm Dr. Shaneva McReynolds with F A M M, it's Families Against Mandatory Minimums. It's an organization in DC. I want to thank you for allowing me to testify as a proponent for resentencing. In 2005, at the age of 28, my husband was sentenced to 235 months in the Federal Bureau of Prisons, which meant he wouldn't be home until the year 2025 and would then be 48 years old. It has been said that our country throws away far too many people. We sentence people to decades in prison and forget they exist. And then we release them from prison with little to no coping skills. As the chairman mentioned, Article 1, Section 11 of the Illinois Constitution records that all penalties shall be determined both according to the seriousness of the offense and with the objective of restoring the offender to useful citizenship. Two forms of legislation with retroactivity provisions allowed my husband the opportunity a useful citizenship. Because of the Drugs Minus Two Amendment in the Fair Sentencing Act, my husband's sentence was reduced, and he was then released home after 11 years and seven months. Second look sentencing provisions afforded my husband and our family priceless experiences and opportunities. My husband was able to spend a year with his mother before she passed away, and he was home to see two of our children graduate. One year after his reentry, my husband started a logistics company. We hire individuals reentering society just as he once had to endure. And as you can guess, it was most certainly a struggle. We believe in second chances. He was given one, and it's our duty to pay it forward. My husband is a taxpayer contributing to the same society he once committed crimes against. As of 2020, there were over 10,000 people serving sentences of 15 years of war in the Illinois prison system. Illinois reliance on lengthy sentences have led to an increasingly older prison population with nearly one in four people incarcerated over the age of 50. Many of these individuals do not need to be incarcerated for decades. Illinois can and should pass legislation to provide people with life and long sentences as an opportunity for resentencing or parole.
Speaker, one minute remaining.
Thank you. We must commit to fair, rational, and humane sentencing practices which allow incarcerated people to prepare to rejoin their families and communities. It's evident that resentencing works at the federal level and makes our communities stronger. And now the urge here is that Illinois needs to create more pathways for people to receive a second look at their sentences. Resentencing, in my opinion, creates second chance mechanisms. Second chance mechanisms offer hope, and hope directly translates to public safety. I want to thank you all again for the opportunity to share my testimony, and I am open to any questions you may have.
Kelly, you're on mute.
It's not cooperating. Sorry about that. Are there any questions for Dr. McReynolds? I don't see any hands. Doctor, thank you for sharing your testimony and your experience. I'm grateful to you. We're going to keep us moving here. And we're moving now to Preston Ship of the National Campaign for the Fair Sentencing of Youth.
Yes, good morning. I'm trying to get my camera to turn on here. Well, I apologize. I'm having some problems getting my camera to work. But yes, I'm a senior policy counsel for the Campaign for the Fair Sentencing of Youth. And, well, there it goes.
There you go.
Perfect. Pleasure to be with you all this morning. The Campaign for the Fair Sentencing of Youth is a national organization that focuses on eliminating life without the possibility of parole for people who are younger than the age of 18. And so, once the US Supreme Court started weighing in on this issue, saying that a mandatory life without parole sentence is unconstitutional for someone who is under the age of 18, we saw states all across the country conducting resentencing hearings in order to comply with the Supreme Court holdings in Miller and Montgomery. And what we have learned, Montgomery was decided in 2016. So we're now six years into this process of states conducting resentencings, and over half the country has abolished life without parole completely for people younger than 18. And what we've seen is that as people come home, as they're given the opportunity of a second chance, they thrive over and over and over again, whether you're in a state like Michigan or a state like Florida or Louisiana, you know, when a person is given an opportunity to demonstrate that they have invested in rehabilitation. Over and over again, resentencings are getting that right. And the people who are coming home are doing exactly what we would expect a rehabilitated person to do. We have a national network of people who are finding incredibly creative ways to serve their communities. Not everybody is getting to come home, you know. Resentencing is not some sort of an automatic pathway home. It's a second look to see who that person has become. And from California to Vermont, we are seeing that it works, that the recidivism rate of these folks is 1%. And while we focus on the juvenile population, we have seen it expand. In DC, it's up to age 25 now. And in Rhode Island, it's up to age 22 because we see that it works. The track history is there. This is proven reasonable measured reform, and we fully support it. And I appreciate the opportunity to share with you this morning.
Wonderful. Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Ship? Look for hands. Great. All right, seeing none. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for sharing your experience. We're going to move on to Aswad Thomas from the Alliance for Safety and Justice.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Thank you, members of the Resentencing Task Force, for having me here today. My name is Aswad Thomas. I'm the Vice President of the Alliance for Safety and Justice, which is a multi-state organization that's committed to advancing state public safety reforms. So I'm also the National Director of Crime Survivors for Safety and Justice, a national network of crime victims working together to heal our communities and shape public policy as well. I'm also here as a victim of a violent crime myself. I was shot twice in my back, and those bullets my professional basketball career and led me on this journey that I am today of working with crime victims across the country, also in the state of Illinois as well. I'm here representing our statewide network in Illinois, where we have 11,000 crime victim members in local chapters across the state in places like Chicago, East St. Louis, Peoria, and other areas, and also Spanish-language-led chapters across the state as well. You know, Illinois's crime victims, you know, support resentencing because it is an opportunity to reduce lengthy sentences and really shift investments away from over incarceration, which is an ineffective public safety strategy. Instead, crime victims want to address trauma, shape public policies that are geared toward prevention and rehabilitation, and also advocate for more resources for programs that serve the needs of victims. We, as CSSJ, we support modifying lengthy sentencing through resentencing because crime victims prefer a system that rehabilitates rather than punishes. The Alliance for Safety and Justice a few years ago conducted a survey of Illinois's statewide victims on their views on safety and justice across the state and found that crime victims support reducing prison sentences to pay for investments in real accountability measures that always isn't just incarceration. In that same survey, we found that Illinois crime victims, by a margin of nearly three to one, believe that prison makes people more likely to commit crimes than it does to rehabilitate them. And we support, you know, policies that really reduce incarceration because, as many of us know, it's not an effective public safety strategy. Incarceration is costly. Prison time has little, if any, effect on long-term public safety at large, and it really destabilizes communities. Communities most impacted by incarceration, most impacted by violence, are the least supported when it comes to healing and rehabilitation as well. So resentencing
One minute remaining.
Re-sentencing really helps shift towards a more restorative approach that promotes healing, that promotes accountability and real public safety. As victims, you know, we want what happened to us to never happen to someone else. We also want those who have caused harm to come back home into our community better than they were before. And so resentencing is not just in the interest of justice, but it's a process that really honors what crime victims are asking for, which is accountability and a shift towards investments in proven methods preventing crime and supporting survivors as well. So I just want to thank you all for your time and also an opportunity for us as crime victims to provide our perspective on this important public safety measure, which is to address the root causes of crime and help people return back home to their families. So thank you all so much. I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Looking for raised hands here. Anyone? So with that, I will thank you for sharing with us, and we're going to move on to another section of faith leaders, restorative justice practitioners, and survivors. I understand that Father Kelly might not be here yet. Has anyone noticed if he's arrived?
No, Kelly.
Okay, let's go to Sister Janet Ryan with Precious Blood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hey. My name is Sister Janet Ryan. I am a Franciscan sister in the Catholic Church. I'm happy to be with you today to share something that's really important to me. I minister full-time on the South Side of Chicago at Precious Blood Ministry of Reconciliation. We are a restorative justice hub that works with youth and family members impacted by poverty, trauma, and incarceration. Thank you for providing this time to hear my testimony and the many others in support of resentencing possibilities for our brothers and sisters who are serving extremely long sentences in Illinois. I visit a man incarcerated at Big Muddy River who committed a serious crime when he was 16 years old. Before his trial, Peter was offered a plea deal of 65 years, of which he would have been required to serve 32 and a half. He was a young, immature 17-year-old and rejected the offer. He went to court and was given a sentence of life without the possibility of parole. Today, Peter is a mature, healthy, contrite, 55-year-old man who has served over 35 years in prison. The last 20 years, he has a spotless record. If we, the state, were willing to give Peter a 65-year sentence and release him after 32 and a half, which he has already served, might we revisit his case to determine if public safety and justice are truly being served by him and the many others like him who are serving these extreme sentences? At Precious Blood Ministry of Reconciliation, we have hired several men who were formerly incarcerated. Adolfo, Michael, Gino, Ray Fel, Alex Orlando, Jojo Mack, Fred Spanky, and others who have returned to our community after serving between 17 and 40 years in prison. These gentlemen bring deep wisdom, compassion, competence, humor, and much-needed mentorship to our youth and our community.
Speaker, one minute.
They have greatly enhanced and enriched our restorative programming by their very presence, dedication, and commitment to give back. They are our anchors and leaders in our organization and community. Fred recently bought a house in the neighborhood. Two others recently got married. These men have much to offer our broken world, and we need their wisdom and support, especially for our youth, who rely on them as mentors and big brothers. Please, let's give folks a second look, and let's remember the humanity in all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sister. Next, we have, oh, I'm sorry, I see. Hand up, Scott Main. Go ahead.
Thank you so much for that testimony, Sister Ryan. And perhaps Father Kelly will be talking about this if he's able to join us later. But you mentioned sort of what what this community of individuals coming home has to offer, which was really helpful. But I was wondering if you could talk just really briefly about what Precious Blood actually offers to those people who are returning home.
Thank you. Yes, we have a returning citizens program. We offer mentorship before folks are released from prison, so to help them processing and planning their life outside once they are released. We also offer housing for, we have three or four houses of hospitality for men and women who are returning to the community. And we offer assistance with employment and case management for folks once they get out employment and IDs and resettling back into the community. Those are some of the things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sister Ryan? All right. Thank you so much for sharing your work. There is a tentative person next on the list. Is Jeannie Bishop here?
She is going to join us, Representative, but she's about 15 minutes delayed.
Okay.
So you can go on to Madeline.
Okay, Madeline Bear from Chicago Alliance Against Sexual Exploitation. You're up. And then Brenda Mitchell, you're on deck.
Thanks, Representative Cassidy. Thank you so much for having me today this morning. My name is Madeline Bear. I'm the Policy Manager for the Chicago Alliance Against Sexual Exploitation or CASE. We are a nonprofit committed to ending all forms of sexual harm through community engagement, prevention education, free legal aid, and policy and advocacy work. And we have long recognized that the criminal legal system is not equipped or designed to support both people who have been victims of crime and people who have caused harm. And we believe in the fundamental dignity and humanity of all people. Allowing for opportunities for resentencing is really consistent with our work at CASE. First, as the task force has already recommended, the constitutional rights of the victims to participate as they choose within a resentencing procedure, similar to how they would participate now for IDOC's program, is a very, you know, very high importance for us. But second, allowing for resentencing actually creates opportunities for people who have caused harm to make amends and change behavior. We really fully believe that our system is way too focused on punishment and retribution and less about appropriate accountability and how people can change and grow. In fact, we really find that there's no appropriate accountability in our system. It's often a choice between long and steep sentences for some or no accountability for others. For example, anecdotally, we often see in our legal work that when sentences or potential sentences are really stiff, we're less likely to see cases that are charged or charged accurately to the facts of the case because it seems like law enforcement or prosecutors may feel that the sentence does not fit the behavior for the person who has caused harm. We can often see this dynamic, particularly with men who are seen as prominent in their community or family men, people that, you know, wouldn't do these certain kinds of sexual harm or youths whose lives, you know, quote-unquote, cannot be ruined by a criminal prosecution. And we also see systemic racism within this dynamic with black men more often sentenced to more time than non-black men. So what this does for survivors is it fails to account for how they themselves have been harmed and how they may choose to go to law enforcement seeking some accountability. But it results in kind of one of two options. Either the person who has caused harm is charged and convicted of an incredibly serious offense and is locked up for a significant amount of time because our system is comfortable with incarcerating that person.
Speaker, one minute.
Thank you. There is no justice for the survivor who asked for it because of the dynamic that's at play here. We've seen this recently in a very prominent case in the city of Illinois. Resentencing also allows the court to further recognize and understand what brings people to cause harm or participate in a criminal offense. For example, we're incredibly supportive of a bill, House Bill 4847, for survivors of gender-based violence to have resentencing opportunities, like trafficking survivors who acted in self-defense have been coerced by their trafficker into participating in criminal acts, or were simply present for an act that their trafficker committed. It's very frustrating that these factors are not accounted for very often during the initial prosecution or sentencing, but it should be allowed during a resentencing process as this task force suggests. We're incredibly supportive of opportunities like this, given kind of the focus on long sentencing and incarceration. We can only imagine what our system would look like, reimagined, if the amount of money that we spent on incarceration and other things were moved towards proven prevention strategies, like comprehensive sex and health education and other things as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline. I thought I saw a hand, but looks like it's down. I'll check the chat. Okay. Great. Thank you, Madeline. With that, we're going to move on to Brenda Mitchell, who's a survivor.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm with the advocate group Purpose Over Pain and also Everytown Survivor Network as a senior fellow with them. I speak today on a personal level in that I lost my son Kenneth to gun violence, and I, a week after taking his brother for his third tour of duty in Afghanistan to fight for what started as Iraqi freedom, only to lose my other son in a free country. I have been on the advocacy trail in dealing with the issues of trauma. And having gone through the court system for two years and watching the different elements and having had past experience with the brother who actually went through the court system, I keenly realized when we got to sentencing. And I watched a mother for two years on the opposite side of the aisle from me who had also lost a son to gun violence and is now preparing for a sentencing for the only son that she had left that I also saw bring a form- that I also saw bring a four-month-old baby into the courtroom that will never have the opportunity to visualize his father in a healthy manner. My son left three children behind, of which he was... had custody of the two, and the other was born 30 days after his father's death. When I got to sentencing, having watched the whole process and understanding the elements of it, and I saw the mother get up there to try to explain what a good son she had, only not to be able to complete that process, and to stop in front of me and say, "I never wanted this for your family." And my response to her was, "I don't hold you accountable for this. I release you from this." But when we got to sentencing, and I looked across the aisle, truly, I miss my son Kenneth, and truly, I believe that the process needed to do whatever it was going to do, so that I could close this chapter of my son's life and get on...
One minute.
Get on with killing. But on that day, when I looked across both aisles, I realized that we live in a society that even in this moment, justice was not served, because we sent one black man to the grave, and we sent the other one to jail for 72 years. And I couldn't help but feel that our system was broken, and our society needs a healing process as well. And so I do believe that in the social justice process, that we need to identify what that social justice is and what it should look like for a survivor and another mother that has to visit their child through a jail cell. Thank you for allowing me to speak and have this moment.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. We'll go to questions. I saw Chief Davis's hand first.
Yes, thank you, Rep. Ms. Mitchell, can you share briefly some of the things that your organizations that you're involved with are doing to help with the process of ensuring that people returning home and those families that were victims are able to move forward?
We have been very proactive in advocacy around survivors and Survivor Network, but also victims. And even through the justice process, I am currently creating what is known as a Healing Circles in our church, where we are dealing with individuals that are back in the community and are also doing community service. But we're also dealing with the trauma that we have in our communities, because we know that gun violence is one issue, but a subset of that is the historical and personal issues of trauma that exist in our communities as well. So we're very active in being a part of the solutions as opposed to the problems.
Thank you. Up next is Scott Main.
Thank you so much for your testimony here this morning, Ms. Mitchell. And you talked about wanting to advocate for a system that promotes healing. And I wonder if you could tell us, from sort of a victim advocate's perspective, of how you view the idea, the notion of finality?
Finality? Just so I can clarify, in terms of finality, what's your meaning in this?
So, finality is a concept that, once, you know, a court procedure happens and a judge gives a sentence, that there's this idea of finality, that that... That is sort of a once-and-for-all sort of statement, and it's done from then on. So we should not disturb something that was said, you know, by a judge at one point.
I've seen that. I don't think that there is a one-size-fits-all process or pattern in this. And that I also had a brother that came from a middle-class family, but he still, you know, because of some of the issues that we experienced with rejection in society, based on race, sought another path for the rejection that he received, and could not be saved from his own self. So finality, for me, I think, needs to be looked at. And while even though this individual has finality, for me, I guess, in a sense, and that he was sentenced, I don't know what that looks like. But I think that we should also be at the table to try to figure that out, because there is a lot of things in society that has created some of the social ills that we see today. And so how do we change a process that has been ingrained in a country that's still moving toward those exact same processes?
Thank you. I see a question from Ms. Kendall.
Yes, I would like to ask Ms. Mitchell a question regarding the... What she said about how, when you're in the courtroom and you have your... You're a victim, or you're the mother of a child that has committed one of these crimes, and you know in your heart that your son should be punished, but the punishment is not... Is not fair, and the scales of justice are not fair. When you give... My son was 19 when he committed what the state called a first-degree murder, which was never a first-degree murder, but that's what they said. It was clearly an accident. And they gave my son, at 19 years old, 25 years for a murder. And then they gave him an additional 25 years, because it was a handgun. And then you hear of cases that from non... you know, non-blacks, non-Hispanics, that when they have the same kind of... the same case, they use this case in state law against my son to punish him and to sentence him to this... all this time. And then you hear that the guy that... the case that they used was a white man in his 40s, who pretty much did the same thing, said it was an accident, and he only received 30 years.
Ms. Kendall, Ms. Kendall, I need you to get to your question. I'm really sorry.
Yes, so my question is, how do you go about getting your son, or anyone, back into the courts to be resentenced without... when they have all this time against them?
Okay, okay, Ms. Kendall. Okay, that is the purpose of the entire task force, to look at the law and ways to address it. The current law really only allows that to happen at the behest of the state's attorney. And we are looking at other... that's the... we are information gathering to find out if there's a way to expand those rights. So that's... that is the underlying purpose of our task force. But we do... we really do need to keep moving, so that we can get everybody's testimony in.
Let me just be clear. My son was the victim. He was not the perpetrator. So I think that I'm dealing with a different set of...
Okay. I appreciate that. Okay, we're going to... Do we have Father Kelly or Jeannie Bishop yet?
I think we have Father Kelly.
Yes, Dave Kelly here.
Okay, great, thanks. Go ahead, Father Kelly.
Sure. So my name is Father David Kelly. I'm the Executive Director of Precious Blood Ministry of Reconciliation. Precious Blood is a community-based, restorative justice organization in the backyard of Inwood Community. The very core of our mission is to support and accompany young people and families who have been impacted by violence and incarceration. And we do that through a restorative justice lens. I've also served over 40 years as chaplain at Cook County Juvenile Detention Center, and for many years at Cook County Jail. In those years, I have met and accompanied many, many young people who went on to serve decades in prison. I've had the privilege of seeing the person, not merely the act. Some admittedly horrific, but the person nonetheless as well. My support of the resentencing effort is basic. First, people change, and they shouldn't be defined by the worst thing in their lives. And second, our communities are desperate need of individuals who can contribute to the well-being of the community. Our youth need those people who look like them, have similar experiences as them, who can help them guide and guide them toward success. In my experience, so many of the men and women who have been resentenced are now working in organizations, violence prevention, social services, and a host of other efforts, building up the community and making it a better place in the safety of communities. There are outreach workers, and there are case managers, there are program managers, clinicians, and so much more. Here at Precious Blood, we have over 10 individuals who have spent decades in prison and are now in leadership positions here. They're the ones who have the greatest impact on the lives of our young people and their families. Just the other day, over 70 individuals, once incarcerated for decades, gathered here at Precious Blood for a barbecue with their loved ones. They built community, they played softball with our young people, and there was this tenderness and love that they were able to demonstrate to our young people. You could feel the power of their commitment to ensuring that those young people have a caring adult, a caring male in their lives. Two of those same individuals who work here, who are program managers here at PBMR, have bought homes in our community, only blocks from here. Their presence on those blocks have a dramatic positive impact on our community. In short, PBMR would not be able to do the work without them. I strongly support resentencing, one, to reduce the number of people in prison, and two, and maybe more importantly, to be an asset in our communities such as ours. I thank you for your time and your efforts.
Thank you, Father Kelly. Before I go to questions, I need to apologize to everyone. I was not clear on my guidelines. This portion of the meeting should be questions from members of the task force only. We will be taking public comment after we've taken presentations. And I would also caution that we're not going to be able to dig into individual cases in that public comment time, so rather speaking more broadly about policy. And with that, we'll go to Shova.
My apologies.
Oh, no, no, I did... I'm the one that made the mistake, Father Kelly. You did nothing wrong. You did exactly what you were here to do.
Good morning, Father Dave. I have kind of two questions that are related. One is, from what you talked about, the return of folks into society, and specifically, the impact on the young people you work with. Would you... How would you frame that? Would you say that there is a public safety benefit to folks coming home? And what has really been the impact on young people who you think might otherwise be at risk of, you know, harming folks or committing crimes? What do you think the impact of this population is?
It's a tremendous impact. Yes, I think it's one of the greatest violence prevention strategies we have, especially when they buy and live in our community. And there are countless more young people coming to our center who otherwise probably wouldn't come, because when they come here, they're received by people who understand where they're coming from and don't judge them, but rather accept them for who they are. And so just having them here regularly, and our programming, and our mentoring, and our case management, is a tremendous asset to helping them to discover their own gifts and talents in life. So yes, I think it's had a strong impact.
Thank you, Father Dave. I just had one slight follow-up, which is, I'm aware that Precious Blood also works closely with survivors and victims of crime, and that those populations are not necessarily distinct from those who might be involved in the system in other ways. What, in your experience, has been the viewpoint of survivors and victims and working closely with these folks who have come home?
So, yes, we do. We work with a lot of families, mostly mothers and grandmothers who've lost children to homicide. We have restorative justice circles for them. And oftentimes, in those circles, we have mothers who have not only lost a child to violence, to gun violence, but they have also have a child locked up. So it's not often... oftentimes, it's not two separate families. They've experienced both. And even when it is separate, they sit in these same spaces, because they recognize the commonality of their pain and hurt of losing a child, whether it be to gun violence or whether it be incarceration.
Thank you, Father Dave. Thank you, Father. I don't see any other questions for Father Dave, so thank you so much for sharing your work and for the work you do. It is incredibly meaningful and powerful, so thank you.
Thank you.
I understand that Jeannie Bishop has joined us, so that will round out this panel.
Good morning, and thank you so much, and forgive my lateness to this meeting.
All good.
To hear Father Dave. I'm here because in 1990, my younger sister Nancy and her husband Richard and their unborn baby were murdered by a 16-year-old boy who lived a few blocks away from them. And when he got the mandatory sentence at the time of life without parole, I was all fine with that. I thought, you know, you're going to spend the rest of your life in a cell for what you did. And then I had children of my own, two boys, and I thought about what it would be like to have them do some terrible mistake early on in their life. And then, no matter how sorry they were, how remorseful, how much they tried to make reparation for what they did, that they would never, ever have a chance to get out. And that seems so merciless and wrong to me. And so along with, you know, my Christian faith and belief in the possibility of redemption for every human being, I really came to oppose this sentence of life without parole for juveniles in these long sentences, and favored everyone having a chance at mercy, at restoration, and having a second look and a second chance. And so I reached out to the person who killed Nancy and Richard, and I have learned so much from that encounter, just the power of him being able to say how sorry he was, how he wished he could go back and talk to that 16-year-old boy with a gun, and tell him what he knows now, how bullish that was, how wrong. And it's been a great solace to me to know that, to hear that apology, and to know that this is someone who has grown and changed. And I think every human being is capable of that.
Thank you. No matter how many times I hear your story, it's still so incredibly powerful. So thank you for being here today. Do we have any questions from Ms. Bishop? No. With that, then, I will thank you for your time and for your ongoing work. We are going to move on to our next panel of family members of impacted individuals. We're going to start with Esther Clark.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Esther Clark. I have a son, Javel, who was 17, and a nephew, Darnell, who was 15 when they were sentenced to natural life for their cases. In 2016, they received a resentencing trial and were given a time reduction. Javel received 54 years, and Darnell received 74 years. But individuals who are 18 and older are not considered for resentencing trials. IDOC is overcrowded and lacking the ability to release people or properly rehabilitate a respectable percentage of people. Illinois doesn't have a parole system in place to show the progress of inmates while serving time, have been going to school, or working in the industry. I think there should be a parole system, so people who have to serve time can be evaluated after a period of time. Illinois has, in its constitution, a proportionate penalty clause, Article 1, Section 11. It states, "Each individual shall be sentenced with the objective of restoring them back to a useful citizenship." What the people of this state need is legislation in place to serve as a guideline whose objective is to keep Illinois true to the words of the Constitution. Hopefully, the men and women that are incarcerated in the IDOC will have an opportunity to earn early release and receive a second chance. Do you have any questions?
It might be best, in this instance, if we perhaps hear from all of the family members, and then there might be questions for everyone, because I think everybody's story might be a little bit different, so that might... it might be helpful for folks to hear the whole spectrum. Sorry, Jeannie, did you have a question? Oh, sorry, I can't... I... sorry. It's members that I can ask questions. Sorry, anyway. Let's keep going with the family members, apologies. Thank you. Margie Zuko?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, thank you for joining us.
All right, thank you, everybody. My name is Margie Zuko. I'm a mom of an incarcerated son. And I just want to say thank you for listening to everybody's testimony today, and especially thank you for allowing me to share a little bit of my story. My ask is that you please consider creating a resentencing process in Illinois for people serving long sentences. We're not asking for everyone to be released. Instead, we're just asking you to create a process that takes a second look at those behind prison walls, to determine if they remain a threat to society, and if not, just give them a second chance. to determine if they remain a threat to society, and if not, just give them a second chance. At the age of nineteen, my son was charged with felony murder and his sentence was thirty-five years, even though his actions were not determined to be the cause. While the felony murder laws have changed in Illinois, they are not retroactive. So he remains with no ability to reduce his sentence with good behavior or completion of any programs. Before this happened to us, I was one of the people, probably like most of the population, that didn't know anyone in prison and just had this general sense that, yeah, when you go to, when you do something wrong, you get a sentence and you get what was deserved. I also, though, believe that it was up to the individual to rehabilitate themselves once inside and that everybody got a chance to reduce their sentence. I had no idea that there were certain rules and regulations regarding that. Never did I think prison would become a part of my world and never did I think, no matter what a person does, there's no way they can get credit for doing well. What I've learned, I want to share with you. One bad decision, one moment in time can turn into a lifetime of regret, remorse, struggle, and learned humility. And not everybody is bad. People learn from their mistakes. People want to make it right and people want to get a second chance. Everyone deserves to be looked at as an individual, not as a number with a sentence attached.
Speaker, one minute.
Thank you. There are so many like you, like me, and like him that simply made a horrible tragic decision at one moment of their life. These are young people making mistakes of judgment and not being given a chance to show everyone how they've changed, to show people what they've learned. The people who work in the prisons know who the people are that deserve a second chance. And we're just asking for you to find that also. In closing, I just want to say again, thank you for listening. It's important to take into consideration a person's age, the facts of what actually happened, the rehabilitation, and the interest of justice. And please, let's just have Illinois lead the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Anna Anderson. Is Anna with us?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, there you go.
Give my system a moment. Okay. Hello, my name is Anna Anderson, and I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak today about my support for a resentencing process in Illinois. This issue is personal to me because of the deep impact it has had on my family. My brother Eric Anderson was sentenced to life without parole in 1995. I was three years old at the time and did not quite understand what that meant. I would learn it meant that at the age of fifteen, Eric would never have a chance to come home and I would only ever know him behind bars. I came to realize that no matter what he did to better himself, atone for his mistakes, or what changes might come with the law, he would never know life outside of prison. Most of the people in my life did not realize that children were being sentenced to life without parole in the United States. Even more were surprised at the frequency. I'm grateful that this changed in 2012 when the U.S. Supreme Court ruled in the case Miller v. Alabama that Eric's sentence and those like his was cruel and unusual punishment. Once resentenced, he received a new sentence totaling thirty years. Now he will be coming home by August 2024, something I never thought that was possible. But it was because the Illinois Supreme Court ruled that Miller v. Alabama would be retroactive. Now, forty-three, Eric has spent the majority of his life in the penal system. He is fortunate to have a release date. While I will get my brother back, not everyone is so lucky. Without retroactivity, he would never have had the chance to prove rehabilitation. While incarcerated, my brother has changed and matured. He became an electrician while in Menard, a maximum security prison in downstate Illinois. Eric is currently housed in Kewaunee and developed a newsletter called Kewaunee Horizons that is published on the IDOC website and is available to all people currently incarcerated. He has made an effort to change and grow, and I know there are others that have done the same, despite any motivation to do so, to be released. We are currently living in a time where sentences for the same crime can be drastically different solely based on what year the sentencing occurred. We are the only nation that gives up on our people, but more importantly, our children without a second look. We all change and grow throughout our lifetimes. Now, at the age of thirty, I know that I am not the same person I was at fifteen or even twenty-one.
Speaker, one minute.
Thank you. I've had the chance to grow and learn from my past mistakes. I know that Eric has too. I believe this is why a second look should happen. Mistakes are a fact of life, and everyone should be given a second chance and hope to learn from them. Additionally, the law should change and grow with society. If we can see that a sentence is wrong today, that means it was wrong yesterday, and that is why I believe we should have second looks in Illinois. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. One more family member, Sharon McElrath.
Good everyone. Good morning, everyone. My name is Sharon Anderson McElrath, and I am here on behalf of my son who is incarcerated in Illinois. We actually do not live there, but from there, but that's where he is right now. And I have become an advocate for prisoners who have mandatory sentencing under draconian laws. And so I've even volunteered my services with the Illinois Prisoner Project in writing some clemencies. So to just tell my story, I'm just going to read my letter that got me to this point today. It says, "I'm reaching out in the hope of gaining an understanding of the workings of Senate Bill 2129 in terms of who can generate a petition for review as well as how to increase its momentum outside of the Chicagoland area. The new law seems to be used in a small number of places. It has been rumored that prosecutors around the state believe that sentences awarded align with the crimes, and therefore there is no need to implement SB 2129. Numerous individuals are incarcerated due to excessive sentencing under the draconian mandatory minimum laws that systematically and disproportionately impact poor people in those of black and brown communities. Rather than to look at an individual's history, these laws have been used as a one size fit all. My son has served eleven years of a thirty-year sentence as a first-time nonviolent drug offender for trafficking less than a kilo of cocaine. He has been classified as a Class X felon who must serve seventy-five percent of that sentence or twenty-two point five years. Senate Bill 2129 seems to be the fair way to correct over sentencing. However, when states' attorneys are opposed to it or not motivated to review the cases, I question the validity of the bill and how it's going to aid in reducing mass incarceration if the law is only to be used discretionary. Although the support of the bill was primarily out of the Chicago Cook County State Prosecutor's Office, it became law, and as such, it seems practical that Senate Bill 2129 would be administered statewide.
Speaker, one minute.
No mandate, no oversight, and no accountability for prosecutors to review past cases, more disenfranchisements and discriminations will continue to occur for those individuals whose cases happen to have occurred outside of Cook County, Illinois. Then how then will justice prevail? I thank this committee for being progressive and trying to find ways to overcome that travesty is what I'll call it. And I ask that as we move forward, as you all move forward, that retroactivity would be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to all the families who presented today. Are there any questions for this panel? I think I would ask if anybody, if any of y'all have made an attempt to contact the prosecutor in your cases to request a review and what your experience has been in that?
So I have. I've written to Representative Ghazardi, someone that I met, because I don't live in the state. I grew up in pure Illinois, but I've been gone out of this state for thirty years. So I've reached out to him and he asked me to reach out to the DA's office, and I did, and I got zero response. I did it by, I tried to call and then I sent it in the form of an email, and I've not gotten any response.
And do you recall which county prosecutor that was?
It's going to be, it's in Macon County, Illinois.
Great. Thank you. I see a hand up, but I don't know if this is a task force member. Is Kinji Scott representing someone on the task force?
I don't think so representative.
Thank you. So just a reminder that the Q and A period is for questions from members of the task force. If non-task force members wish to speak, that's what the, we have a public comment period at the end, so we'll be more than happy to hear from you then. Are there any other questions for the panel? Seeing none, our next panel is impacted individuals. I think we'll do the same thing. We'll hear from all of them and then take questions as a group. We're going to start with Xavier McElrath Bay.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And did I say your name right?
You said it right. You got it. Yeah. And I realize Sharon has a similar last name. We need to find out if I remember Sharon, so.
Someday, we'll have to talk.
And, well, I just, you know, I'm Xavier McElrath Bay. I'm a co-executive director of the campaign for the Per Sensitive Youth. And though I can share in the capacity of the work and the hope that it brings, I want to go back even to my childhood growing up in the system. I was thirteen years old when I was given a twenty-five-year sentence. And the psychology of surviving in prison, especially as a young child, is that if I can reach the midpoint of my time, then I made it, and the rest is downhill. So going uphill and downhill was the psychology that we carried inside both older and younger folks will always share in that respect. And we used to play a very, perhaps a bad joke on ourselves. There are times throughout my years growing up in the system when there would be rumors of a three-for-one, a three-for-one provision, meaning under the old law when we were serving day for day, that there was legislation that was happening that could provide a three-for-one provision that would allow us to come out even earlier. And I'll never forget how oftentimes when that rumor was at its peak, how the attitude within the institution would change. The older guys would be out there jogging in the yard. The younger ones would be enrolling into GED and vocational programs. We'll be calling home and saying, Mom, Dad, don't worry. They might be passing a law that might mean we'll come home sooner. I'll never forget how important it was that we were able to have some kind of hope. And though we had no tangible reason to ever believe that such a law even existed, and oftentimes when we talked to the guys in the law library, they never refuted it. I think they understood the importance of hope. I'm imagining how transformative this would be for folks inside, how amazing it would be to know that there's a possibility they can come out sooner if they just so much as do the right things, if they change despite the negative environments, and make the right decisions and invest in themselves and then dream of a future in which they can recreate themselves. I had that hope. I had a twenty-five-year sentence under a day-for-day provision, which meant I got out in thirteen years. Early on, it was challenging. I made a lot of mistakes with the segregation, got into a lot of trouble because I was still very young and petrous and risk-taking. Had they got a snapshot of my life back then, they would have sworn up and down that I should never be freed from prison. But I did change with.
One minute.
As our life became more clear, I began to invest in myself. I got my education. I got an associate of arts in social and general education, certificate in computer technology. I got a bachelor's degree, had a four-point-oh GPA, was increasingly becoming more hopeful about my life and came out and was able to do something that many people may think is exceptional, but it's not exceptional. I know many people were just like me, just, you know, we're not for the hope that they had to come out someday, or perhaps even sooner. We wouldn't be here. And I'll end by sharing a photo. I was in DC last week. Actually, we got half ago. We do a Freedom Party celebrating over nine hundred people who were free, though they were condemned to die in prison as children. If you look at this photo, you'll see that in that party, we had over a hundred and ten former life sentence children who were told they were going to die there. Many of them are from Illinois. Thanks to resentencing, they had the ability to show that they had changed. Look at the faces in the photos, and the faces in that photo, old and young, many people who were, again, condemned to die in prison, but are outliving positive and wondrous and beautiful lives. Some of the most compassionate, caring, loving people I've ever known. And I would encourage all of us to see these faces and know that they're not very much different from those inside in our state who deserve the same hope. Let's do better than other states. Let's lead the way in being able to afford meaningful opportunities through these to those who've changed for the better. It's a simple it's a simple thing to ask, but I know it'll be a challenging thing to make happen. Let's continue on in sharing that people's true selves can be manifested through hope. Thank you so much for all that you are doing.
Thank you. And not unlike you, I keep a picture of my nephew, who's now in his forties. But it's the classic preschool photo of a kid on a pony in a cowboy suit. Who, and it is one of the main pictures in my office because everybody was that little boy on a pony at one point. So thank you for sharing your story. We're going to go continue through. Oh, go ahead. Did you have something to add? I saw you go off mute for a second there.
You so much. Thank you for that.
Awesome. Thanks. We're going to go on to James Swansea. Maybe. Do we have James?
Yes, he's here.
Oh, there we go.
Good morning. My name is James Swansea, and I'm a policy associate at Restored Justice Foundation. Thank you for allowing me to speak today in support of a resent, of a resentencing process in Illinois. I understand the importance of this process and care because along with me being a policy associate, I'm also an impacted individual who was sentenced at seventeen as a child to natural life without the possibility of parole. I served twenty-eight years in the Illinois Department of Corrections. I made some choices that I'm not proud of, and I was held accountable for those choices in the eyes of the law and in my eyes also. I always be remorseful, which needs to be understood in order for rehabilitation to occur. Ultimately, through Miller v. Alabama, I had the opportunity for resentencing, which is why we are here today. I was resentenced in 2018 to eighty years. Thankfully, I was granted clemency by Governor Pritzker in December of 2020. So ultimately, I've been home a little under two years. So, and during my incarceration, I found that that was not my worst mistake, you know? So I never felt like I was going to spend the rest of my life in prison. I held on to what no one else did, you know, me. I held on to the hope regardless of what anyone thought of me. I literally grew up in prison. I was seventeen. And becoming who I am today, you know, I matured naturally and found that although I was in a very negative place, you know, I could have a positive effect on my life and other people contributing in a positive way. And this mentality, you know, assisted me in earning a clerical position and, you know, the Menard Correctional Industries where clothes were made and, you know, that was sent throughout the state. So that was a heralded job, you know, and I took pride in that. So I started to hold myself accountable for all that I had been through because just as I was judged for my wrongs, I also wanted to be judged for my rights. And this in itself is a level of rehabilitation because it taught me patience and understanding, which made me naturally want to do the right thing, you know, which in prison, you know, a place as harsh as prison, it can be hard to do at times. My blessing came through changing law. Not everybody gets those blessings. You know, I know incarcerated men and women that deserve a resentencing process, you know, and would give anything to show who they've become. This process will give them that chance. The impact I have now is powerful. I'm able to be a son to my mother, a brother to my younger siblings, a father to my sons, and a grandfather to my five grandchildren, you know? I'm now able to advocate for those same incarcerated men and women, you know, to show that longer sentences do not deter crime and the resentencing process needs to be used in the interest of rehabilitation. There are many incarcerated men and women that just need to be given a chance to show what they've become, the same chance that I was given. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you. Let's continue with Orlando Mayorga.
Good morning, task force members. Thank you for providing me this opportunity to provide testimony today. My name is Orlando Mayorga. I serve the office of Lieutenant Governor as McCormick Reentry Policy Coordinator for the Justice Equity and Opportunity Initiative. The work of the resentencing task force is important to me because of the difference it can make, not only on public safety, but in providing a pathway for people to realize their highest human potential. I often reflect on two questions I learned while serving twenty years in the Illinois Department of Corrections, starting at the age of seventeen. They are what happened and what can be done to repair the harm. I learned to process these questions long before I was released from incarceration by taking part in CAE, Community Anti-Violence Education Group. In this group, I began to develop understanding and the skills needed to be emotionally and socially intelligent. Our mission in that space was to train peacemakers on the inside who can extend peacemaking to the communities we harmed once we were released from prison by learning and teaching about trauma. In that space, we learned together, laughed together, and cried together as we found healing. There is truth in the saying that hurt people hurt people. Much more powerful is that heal people heal people. Those of us now home offer healing to communities across Illinois. I am proud and happy to share that many of us who bonded and became family in that space are now realizing our peacemaking missions across Illinois. You see, we are people who show that we are not the sum of the worst we have ever done and seek to atone by caring for the beloved community. It is not that we are seeking to prove we were deserving of being resentenced that drove any of us in what we did. It is simply our humanity. We were committed to keep living out. I pause to think about how different this would be for all of us had we been incarcerated after 1998. I would still be serving 40 years, a 40 year sentence with a release year of 2037 due to the way sentencing laws changed that year. My life would be confined to a six by nine cell, hoping to one day make a positive impact in the world. Today, I'm a graduate student at the University of Chicago and work in the second highest office in the, in the state of Illinois. But just as meaningful to me is that I'm able to be a son to a mother that I desired to be a loving son to my whole life. I'm able to be a brother to my siblings who for 20 years did not have the love, guidance and support on a day-to-day basis. I'm not an anomaly. Given the opportunity, people will make the best of that opportunity. I think about the thousands of mothers, fathers, brothers and sisters still incarcerated, unable to realize their best selves and the lives of the loved ones they have because they are serving unjust sentences. I think about the disservice that does to our society, to our taxpaying citizens of Illinois when we keep human beings incarcerated who can be in a community creating safety and peace. We who are engaged in this work to make a difference will keep doing so while leaving the decision-making in your hands. I am hopeful that this committee is successful in implementing a resentencing pathway for people who are in the service to community. Like CAVE, it is in this way that together we can begin to dispel the assumption that incarcerated people are incapable of empathy with the people and communities we harm. As a matter of public safety, we should be intentional about changing the way tax dollars are used to keep people incarcerated, a practice that is antithetical to public safety. Instead, we should be investing in people and initiatives that could be tremendous assets to our state and bring people home who show it. Thank you for your time, committee members.
Thank you, Orlando. Got a couple more on this panel. Joseph Moore.
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
You say my video has been stopped.
Huh. I don't have host capacity, but if one of the SPAC folks could, there we go.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Joseph L. Moore, Jr. I thank the members of the resentencing task force for this opportunity to be heard. I've been, I've been impacted by the criminal legal system. Three months ago, I was released from prison after serving 26 consecutive years. At the age of 22, I was sentenced to 60 years at 100% under the original truth and sentencing bill that became law in 1994. I had so much time that I thought I would never come home. Being that I thought I would never come home, there was no need for me to change my behavior. After the 1994 truth and sentencing law was ruled unconstitutional, I received a less draconian sentence and I, and I began to have hope that I would be released. In preparation for my return to society, that hope caused me to undergo the process of self-rehabilitation. Many current prisoners aren't afforded that hope. Although many of them will one day return to society, most of their, most of their release dates are so far into the future that they aren't spurred to undergo the process of self-rehabilitation. Long-term sentences foster a cycle of incarceration. That cycle is not only a waste of tax dollars. More importantly, it's a waste of human potential. Social science has proven that being incarcerated longer than 15 to 20 years has an adverse effect on a person's ability to be rehabilitated. So if the goal of Illinois's prison system is to rehabilitate people and to make society safer, we must ask ourselves whether or not our current sentencing guidelines are moving us toward that goal. And I believe we all know the answer to that is no. As it relates to long-term incarceration, there are no winners. In most cases, the victims and perpetrators heal from the same disadvantaged communities. They are struggling against the same forces of discrimination and oppression. And the pressure that's, and the pressure of their struggle is intensified by the pro, by the protracted absence of family members. Their absence contributes to the disintegration of the family structure, which leads to the disintegration of the community structure, which creates environments that foster crime. If we truly wish to aid in breaking the cycle of crime and incarceration, we have to create fair and just sentencing guidelines that give people the opportunity to earn their release sooner than later.
One minute.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we have one more person on this panel, Nazir Smith.
Yes. And thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Nazir Smith. I'm formerly incarcerated justice impacted individual. I was sentenced to 26 years on a 60 to 30 charge in 2008 for a home invasion. The, the charge carries 60 to 30 sentencing range and I was sentenced to 26 years. But prior to me being sentenced, I was a college student who played baseball in North Carolina on a scholarship. I was a high school graduate. I was a community, I was respected in my community, very family oriented. And above all, I had never been arrested or incarcerated or charged with even a misdemeanor. So the first time I had a run-in with the law, they gave me close to the maximum sentence on a home evasion charge. And mind you, I pled guilty to my charge, took remorse, even made a remorseful speech. I had community members, I had family support, family supporters who came to testify on my behalf about the mitigating factors. And these individuals stretched my testimony out for days, in fact, long enough for the judge to say, we are not going to extend your sentencing past these days. I need to hear no more testimony from people who love you, who know you, support you, who've raised you, because I already have in my mind that you are deemed punished by the closest term of sentence towards the max. And she didn't even let everybody testify. Long story short. So from the moment I was put in shackles and chained and incarcerated, I knew I made a mistake. It was foreign to me. It was something I never, it was a place I'd never been to. It was, you know, a situation I didn't put my, I didn't mean to, for the outcome to, you know, turn the way it did. But from that moment, I knew I needed to make a change in my life. Not 10 years later, not 12 years later, which in fact, I served 12 and a half years incarcerated. Then thankfully, I was released early, like my brother James, was due to a clemency petition granted by the governor. Prior to that, Governor Pritzker, prior to that, I had been denied three clemency petitions. I've been not denied appeals for resentencing. And I had been ignored on multiple levels. I, I strongly believe that my petition was considered more so due to COVID, the climate of COVID, and it brought, it shed light on the fact that prison overwhelming and prison crowdedness. And thankfully, I was, I was considered for resentencing. But had that not been the case, I would still be serving time incarcerated and released in, in the year 2030. Now, the point, the question I always ask while incarcerated is, how long does it take for someone to learn that they, they made a mistake? I mean, is it possible? Okay. Is it possible to determine that they are reformed? And how do they do that? While incarcerated, there, there is a rule that says you cannot participate in rehabilitative, certain rehabilitative activities unless you have three years minimum on your sentence. Which would mean that for an individual like me, I obtained my associate's degree in, in the first five years of my sentence. I've completed volunteer for every program they had to offer. I even, you know, anxiety, stress and anxiety, leadership building, participated in it and I helped to grow a peer-driven education group where we, I helped numerous guys get their GEDs and things of that nature. But I was not awarded good time. I was not recognized by the state or the Department of Corrections for my, for my efforts. So nothing that I'd done could go unnoticed to the public or to IDOC because according to law, I'm not credited a good time. And once I had completed all those things, nothing else I could do until I was close to 20, 2027, I would not be able to volunteer for nothing else rehabilitated because of, because of the waiting list. But what I want to know is, you know, what, what I have always asked is that who determines who's deserving of a second chance? Is it, you know? I mean, how can we collectively decide or is there a system that can actually determine? Because we do know that there is a thing as excessive sentencing. And have we acknowledged the results and, and the, and the consequence of how detrimental excessive sentencing can be? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. With that, are there questions for any of the members of this panel or the panel collectively? Thank you. Go ahead, Shoba.
Yeah. Hi. Thank you so much for this powerful testimony by all of you. And I hear Xavier when he says that you are not extraordinary, that there are, you know, thousands or more in our prisons, you know, who are, who are like that. And I've heard, but I want to say you, you're extraordinary to me, but I understand the point. I guess one question I have is, given all of the successes you have shared, maybe it's two questions. One is, what do you think were the ingredients for your successful re-entry, given the long-term prison sentences you, you know, had to serve? And related to that, how do you think you've made your communities stronger and safer? And I don't know, anyone can, can answer those however you want to do that or, or whatever time you think Representative Cassidy as well.
Absolutely. Whoever from the panel wants to jump in, go ahead, y'all.
Well, I can speak on it if.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So since, since my incarceration, I've been working with resentencing and I've been working with rehabilitated individuals to help them to find permanent employment. So I do job readiness training, I do career building, I do resume building and I ultimately find employment. And not only have I been doing that, I've been successful in the past year and a half to place over 100 individuals with criminal backgrounds and mentor youth at the same time, because I also work with the youth population between ages 16 and 24, and I give them job readiness training as well. So in the workforce development aspect, what I do know is that there is a labor shortage. You know, there's an extreme labor shortage and there's an extreme craftsman shortage. So we don't have, we don't have skilled, we don't have skilled craftsmen. We don't have carpenters. We don't have electricists. We also don't have, we, we also know the, you know, the detriment of problems in the crime rate. So here it is. We incarcerate a person and fix one problem, but we create four. And so what I've been doing is through mentorship, through my leadership ability and through workforce development, I've been helping those at disadvantage of those who deal with barriers to help them get ready to find employment and be, and be anchors and respected in the community, be anchors in their families and respected in their communities once again.
Great. Any of the other panelists want to respond to Shoba's question?
And well, I'll, I'll share and thank you, Shoba. You know much I love you and everyone who's a part of this effort to bring fair, age-appropriate and trauma-friendly treatment of kids in particular. And I can tell you, there were countless times when I was inside, when I would stand at the bottom gallery during chow line and I would look up at the construction of the tiers and the bars and the bricks that surrounded me. And I would often question, what am I doing here? I felt so deeply inside, especially after like seven or eight years. I'll never forget. It was like an existential dilemma that my environment was antithetical to all that I thought about in regards to myself as being a human being, as being compassionate, caring. As someone who didn't want to be in a violent community, I just wanted to live a normal life, you know, a normal life. And you know, when you have that desire, nothing can stand in the way of that. I can tell you, even when I didn't, even when I had years ago, I literally tore, I literally got my photo album similar to how this is made. I threw out the plastic binder. I removed the sheets and I put them on top of each other. I grabbed the, my sheet and I tore a long string and I, and I looped it on each side. I remember I put additional strings on the bottom and I put the, the loop behind my back and I tied the strings behind my back. And I remember stepping out of segregation as a servant of year in the hole for assaulting a correctional officer. When I came out the hole, I went to the West House in Pontiac. And, and the reason why I put that on my chest is because I was leaving a gang that I was a part of. I wrote a letter to population, to the leadership in my gang and I said, I no longer want to be a part of this gang. When I came into prison, I was a child. Now I'm a man. I was like 18 years old, y'all. But I thought I was a man and I just, I just didn't want to live a normal life. And, and I'm, I stepped out into that yard and I was afraid of getting stabbed up. But I, but I knew they had only one chance. I knew they would only do it once. And I just figured if I'm going to lose my, my life, I'm not going to lose it to death row, which was 300 feet away from me when I was in a hole. I'm going to lose my life doing something that I know is reflective of who I really am and what I really truly believe in and want to stand, stand up for. And that is the normal life that I had dreamed of and which I had never been afforded all my life. And and so what did it take for me to change? The feeling of saying, ouch, this hurts. What did it take for me to change maturity, the, the development of my brain, like the formal operational thinking I was able to, you know, execute, you know, and, and to have a prefrontal cortex that was hitting on all cylinders and recognizing that, wait a minute, this is not who I am. This, this is not the life that I want to live. This, I don't know how I ended up here. And thankfully, I didn't get stabbed up on that yard that day. And they gave me a chance. The older guys in the system saw me and my, my desire to, to get out someday and they embraced it. And, and one of the older guys told me, said, I wish I'd made the same decision that you, that you're making. And I walked that yard alone for months. And so I was able to make it to a medium security prison where I was able to join a boxing program, getting involved and taking advantage of Peloton opportunities that were available to me. You know, enrolling at, at Roosevelt University, Carl Sandberg, you know, doing, working for LTS concessions, you know, doing things that gave my life structure since a meaning and purpose. Like I was always reaching for meaning, no matter where I was at, even when I was in a hole, reading the Bible, reading poetry, reading philosophy. I was never once just emotionally, spiritually, just, you know, I was always, always searching for something more. And I think that, you know, we cannot ignore the humanity of the people who are inside, you know, who write those letters, who cry out to their loved ones, who hold back those tears for their sake. We cannot ignore the, the, also the people who are suffering in our communities. I just got a, I just got a message from Cynthia Alonso, who is the sister of the victim of my case. She said, Xavier, I'm, I'm going to give too much time, but I want to read something to you real quickly. And this is important to me. She said, Xavier, do you think I can get an honorary sign for Pedro? I think it would be nice. What do you think? And I, and I asked, I said, honorary sign? I don't know what that means, but if it's good, then I'm moved on for it. And then she explained to me, she said, the person has to be deceased and we would have to share the story and the good, and, and the good that came out of it. Your, your example, she said, she went on explaining, it would be a street sign on, on the block where Pedro passed away. When we talk about healing in our communities, these are the things that bring healing. It's not longer sets of sentences that ignore the potential for change. It is recognizing that much of the challenges we're faced with are systemic, that the trauma is deep and oftentimes generational. And so I, I, I implore all of you to really just embrace this reality that we're faced with that even though we're inside serving these making sentences, our kids, our mothers, our fathers, our sisters, our brothers, our families are suffering and those who've lost loved ones to violence, I promise you, and I've come to learn very intimately, in a very challenging way at times, but also a very loving way. That is that what they really want is to see that the memory of their loved one is upheld meaningfully through the positive change in, in the person who did harm and also through the, the impact their stories can have upon the lives of kids who are making the wrong decisions. You all can make that happen. You all can do that. And that's why I'm here. That's why many of us are here. And I just hope that, you know, that we just remember that the people inside, they deserve a second chance. No one is beyond redemption. No child is born bad and all children deserve hope. No one should be, should have to live without hope. If children are worthy of a mercy, then who amongst us is?
Yeah. With that, Scott Main has shared that he's going to pass. We're going to go to Yakov Delaney.
Thank you, rep. Can you hear me? Cause I've been having some tech.
Yeah.
First, I want to say thank you to Xavier James, Orlando, Joseph and Azir for your powerful stories and testimonies today. Appreciate you all. I know some of you, we've done some work together. Definitely appreciate all of the, the productive. Definitely appreciate all of the productive and well-meaning for work that you're doing. My question, I think it can apply to anyone on the panel. We as system-impacted people who've been successful in our reentry processes, we often say like, we're not the exception. So from your vantage point, what are some of the obstacles that you say is preventing the other hundreds of men and women in these facilities from transformation into our productive reentry processes? And what is, I guess I have a two-fold question. What is one thing that you will point out or highlight that you think this task force can take to assist in that in the resentencing recommendations that we are seeking?
I'll answer that. How you doing, Yakov? I think what, I think the main thing that I think the resentencing task force has the power to do is open the eyes to everybody how powerful this process actually is. Because, you know, you have guys that are impacted just like us that have not had that chance yet to show those skills. We know them. I think every impacted individual on this meeting today can at least call off 10 people automatically that they know with given, when given the chance, that they can show exactly what it is that they have become. So with that being said, we held on to each other. And it was more or less like, that's what's needed. You know, it's just more or less opening the eyes to people who, you know, naturally wouldn't even look because of that situation, you know. People are not known for who they are. They're naturally known by a number or what institution you're in, or, you know. So it's a lot of things that the general public don't know about, you know, that assist in a person's rehabilitation that also hinders, you know. So I think this will be an eye-opening experience to a lot of people. Anybody else want to add to that?
It looks like Orlando has something to add.
Yeah, I think one of those barriers is the culture conflict that exists when it comes to the way that people on the inside are identified as, you know, threats to security. There was always a conflict between us trying to create community on the inside versus what the staff thought we were actually doing. And I think that needs to change the stigma that not only exists for people that are coming home, but on the inside of us actually trying to make a difference and be peacemakers on the inside when it's actually deemed a threat to security threat groups or that being the case. The other is lack of access to programming based on a person's sentence. And not only that, but programming is not existent in every facility in the state of Illinois. It's really centered around maybe seven specific prisons that have like really great programing, really great supportive staff. And that should not be left to luck or to privilege. I was actually privileged enough and lucky enough to be in specific facilities where the program was built out and I was able to have access, not only to the programming, but to the, I mentioned in the chat, to sages, to people that were mentoring me, to people that were really feeding that change that I wanted to make for myself. And they were reflecting that as well and really having creative license to create programming. For us, the incarcerated population, to create spaces like cave, to create mindfulness and meditation groups, to create second language acquisition for people who may need to learn English, you know. And those are the things that I think make a difference in people that are on the inside and being able to find whatever that survivor mission is, to be teachers, to be instructors, to continue living out our best selves and to, as Xavier and many of us have put, to have that hope that we can actually do that for not only our children, but for the young people out here, if given the opportunity to realize that best self through a resentencing pathway that I think is key to the work that this task force is doing.
Great. Thank you. And I believe Joby is next.
Yes, I'm sorry for the delay there. I wanted to ask, thanks, and thank you to everyone who's come out to testify today. I know this is difficult and often personal. I think this question is for Orlando. You, since you've come out, you talked about how you've been in positions where you've been able to make a huge impact. And we've talked a little bit about the kind of impact people who have done a long time can make. I think the moment we're in right now, there's a lot of fear around crime and violence. And I'm wondering if you have some thoughts specifically, Orlando, on some of the ways that we as a community might reframe our thinking about reentry, especially during a moment when people are so scared. People are scared in the city for sometimes for not good reasons and sometimes for good reasons. So could you talk a little bit about perhaps your view now as somebody who's looking statewide versus where you were a couple of years ago when you were really embedded in a community?
I think it takes a large level of courageousness, not only on the part of those who have been impacted, but those of you who are in this task force, like doing things different than what society has been accustomed and kind of educated in believing works. It's not an easy task because we've all been conditioned to think in this way that prisons and sentencing people to die in prison is the safe way to go. And we see that it hasn't worked and yet we continue to do the same thing. So for me, I think it's almost like a mass reeducation or uneducation that is needed. And I'm not sure how we exactly do that, but, you know, spaces like this and providing platforms for people to share these narratives, both the people that have been impacted by incarceration, but also survivors. Like that's, I think, a voice that largely goes missing from these conversations because there's a testimony that I was privileged to hear of a survivor who mentioned at that conference or at that summit at the Freedom Party that there's this wall that is placed between those of us that we see as survivors and those that we see as perpetrators. And this woman, this amazing hero, Shiro, spoke to climbing that wall and looking over that wall at the young child that had caused her family harm and realizing that there is not much difference between two people that that wall is placed between. At some point, everyone has been impacted by trauma, by loss. And I think we as a society and the way that our criminal legal system is set up, essentially put that wall up to pit each other when mothers and families are actually more aligned in wanting to make a difference and wanting to not lose two sons or two daughters or two families to be suffering endlessly in isolation. That is one thing, and I'm sorry for being a little long-winded, but that is also what it takes and really stepping out on faith. At the end of the day, if it hadn't been for the trust that Father Kelly felt and giving me an opportunity as my first job coming home, I would probably be doing, you know, HVAC work or doing lawn care, happily doing it, trying to volunteer wherever I could to make a difference. But it takes people like Father Kelly, it takes people like you, Joby, to create opportunities for people to really engage in this deep, meaningful work to make a difference because a lot of us, that's what it took. It's a courageousness from people in the community and understanding that those that are closest to the problem are actually the ones closest to the solution and will give out our heart, will give out our very lives, as Xavier put it, to do what it is that we want to reverse and that we were responsible for once having cause.
Great.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. In a piggyback on what Orlando was saying, I think it's also important that we that we also understand that the people who commit these crimes, that we're not innately criminal. We don't have an innate propensity for criminality. I think we got to really think about the social construct of the communities that we come from and how we depressed and how they are oppression in the community. So when we, I think society to a certain degree also bears responsibility in how these things turn out. Because people don't just ultimately grow up and want to be involved in gangs and sell drugs. Sometimes it's the limited choices that they have. And those choices lead to people making bad decisions. So I think we can get it out there, understand that, you know, that we as a society has a bigger part to play with providing programs in those communities. Why those children are young, like precious blood is doing, then maybe we can save some of these people from making some of these decisions. But, you know, I just want to stress that people are not innately criminal. And that seems to be the image of people who are incarcerated, like they was, you know, we was destined to do these things and we weren't destined to do these things. And if many people had choices, you know, when they were younger, of course, we don't sometimes don't truly, fully understand the forces, you know, that are acting upon us. So therefore, we can't make the right decisions in those moments. But given the opportunity, you know, to have, you know, better choices, a better series of choices to choose from, I think that, you know, not only can we do better, but we can also get out, you know, create a different image of ourselves for society in general. That way, we won't be so demonized. I think it's the demonization of people from our communities that make it so easy for us to be thrown away, to be given so much time in prison, you know, locked up and forgotten about.
Orlando, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just did want to touch on something that was in the chat offered by Dar Lisa and something that I think for some reason I choose to not so much forget, but really push back in the recesses of my mind is that a lot of people are still under 23-hour lockdown in certain prisons in Illinois. That is a very dehumanizing thing to incarcerate or to keep people in a cell for 23 hours a day. And that's not isolation for any disciplinary issues. That's just a common practice in maximum security prisons across Illinois where a person has to spend the majority of their life, the majority of their day in a cell with no access to programming, with no access to even a shower. And I just want to stress that when you treat people like that, it's very hard for a person not to think of themselves as an object or as the very animal that people portray us to be. To have to shower on a toilet in a sink, and I don't think that's something that society is actually exposed to, but to sit there, to have to make a makeshift hose out of a cable cord to be able to shower on your toilet. Like those are the dehumanizing aspects of incarceration that I think people don't know about. And that we as resilient or as surviving people on the inside actually internalize and adopt as normal. And that, to me, again, is also a product of why people aren't able to make transitions from looking or feeling themselves as less human because of the lack of access to programming, but actually just basic needs like being able to shower more than once a week in a regular shower.
I want to make sure we stay focused on the resentencing portion as well. Judge Ingram, if you, I think you're next.
Yeah, most of the gentlemen who spoke indicated how old they were when they were sentenced and how many years they served. I'd just be interested in knowing how old each of you were when you were released.
I came out of prison when I was 26, so went in at 13, came out at 26. And, you know, through the work that I do and helping to, in extreme sentencing of youth nationally, you know, we often, you know, try to advance legislation that will provide a meaningful opportunity for release. And what people often interpret as meaningful is this a window or a light somewhere down there. And what that manifests in at times is, you know, you know, DA's arguing for 30 and 40 years before review, which is deeply problematic to even, you know, embrace as a meaningful opportunity for release. And how we, many of us who are inside the system, when we think about meaningful opportunity, we think about what does that opportunity entail? Does that entail coming out of prison at a time in your life and you're no longer able to pursue a career, start a family? When you're no longer able to, you know, embrace your mother and perhaps she's passed or the father has passed, like when we talk about meaningful opportunities for release, we're talking about an opportunity to come out at an age that is ripe for the occasion of recreating our lives, contributing to our communities, pursuing our dreams and being a part of healing in those of our lives. And so I appreciate the question because that is important. You know, if someone's coming out in age, you know, 50 and 60, yet to serve in, you know, 30 and 40 years, that's hardly a meaningful opportunity to come on, recreate your life. And I think that, you know, that is exactly what we're trying to address here.
Orlando, you go ahead. I saw you put it in the chat, but go ahead and just give your answer.
Yeah, I was 17, released at 37, released again from mandatory supervised, released at 40, and still face a lifetime sentence of registering under the Violent Offender Against Youth Registry.
Great. Did any of our other witnesses want to share when they were released?
I was released at age 48, which is three months ago I was released. I was 40 years old. I am 40 years old. I would be on parole for four years, so I'd be 52 when I'm released from parole. And like Orlando was saying, I have a lifetime registry.
I was incarcerated at 17, came home when I was 45. I have three years mandatory supervised release and I have to register for 10 years on the same registry that Orlando speaks of.
Thank you. Did we get everybody there?
Yes, I was incarcerated at the age 20 and released at 32 years old. Had to serve three years mandatory release. And I wanted to piggyback off what the gentleman was saying about restored to youthfulness. So one of the common things I deal with while trying to find placement for individuals who have, you know, are returned citizens. So sometimes individuals will come home and after serving 25 years, for an example, he's now 60 years old, he's now 50, in his late 50s, mid 50s, and he wants to work and he's capable of working. But on his resume, and when he sends the employer, his resume fills out the application, they see his ID. If it's a laborious job, they don't even consider it. Do not, because they don't have faith, but a lot of insurance plays a part of it and just the sheer fact that the experience they've had before with people of that age or whatever, and they were incapable. And in the line of work that I do as well, when dealing with a population that is, you know, considered to be a youthful population, to have some type, to have a certain level of maturity play certain, play different parts. With the youth, there is a sentiment that without being in our age group or without being with the times or the trends, then it kind of has a disconnect when it comes to communication or when it comes to relatability. So to be advocates in the communities, you also have to be able to associate with the times. You know, so here it was, you know, I was 32 years old when I was released from prison, but I'd never held a smartphone before. You know, I never even touched the smartphone or, you know, had been on social media or any of those things, you know. And that's, you know, like, it's unheard of. So, yeah, to be restored to useful citizenship is a thing that needs to be considered as well.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I see another hand, Lisa Daniels.
Good morning, everyone. Representative Cassidy, I heard your statement where you asked if we would keep the or if the comments would be kept to the resentencing, the subject of resentencing. And I wanted to get a little clarity around that. Could you help me out with that?
It felt like we were kind of getting into the appropriateness of having solitary. So I just wanted to make sure we stayed focused on the question of how do we address questions of resentencing? That's all, just not, I felt like we were going into other prison policy issues.
I understand. I wanted to piggyback on that. I just wanted to get clarity. And I thought that's what you meant. And I think that although it's uncomfortable and although it might have gone just a little bit off to the left of the actual resentencing, I think that hearing about the conditions and the inhumane conditions that exist within the prison system are at value to the entirety of the subject of the resentencing. And I just wanted to, I just wanted to put that out there, yes. to the entirety of the subject with, of the subject of the resentencing. And I just wanted to, I just wanted to put that out there. Yes, it's uncomfortable. Um, and yes, it's quite possibly, you know, moving just a little bit off of the subject of re- intent of resentencing. But talking about the conditions that these gentlemen experienced, or these men and women experienced within the confines of IDLC under the auspices of rehabilitation, uh, is extremely important. It does add value to the top, to the, to the topic at hand here, which is the resentencing.
I can appreciate that. Was just trying to make sure that we stayed on track and on time because we do have some limitations on us.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely. I get it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Um, I think with that, we are ready to move to the public comment period. Um, couple of notes, um, we are going to use a very strict timer. So I, I recommend you stay as high level policy related rather than hyper-specific into cases as possible. Um, and if you want to make public comment, please put your name in the queue and the, the admin will keep that queue going. Um, before we get started, um, Kathy Saltmarsh has some housekeeping notes.
Yes, I, I've had a couple of inquiries and I want to explain that we have gotten a very healthy amount of emails and also, um, snail mail from folks who are incarcerated. And I want to assure people, some of whom are on this Zoom, we that we are reading as many as we can, and we are going to be incorporating the, um, you know, repeated themes into a document for our, our RTF, uh, members. And also as much as we can, um, weaving that into the report that we will be publishing at the end of the year. But I was, you know, we struggled initially with how to make sure we included the voices of those who are incarcerated. And I will say that the Kiwanee Horizons Newsletter took care of that for us. Um, so we are, we are well stocked with that input. I'll turn it back to you, Representative Cassidy.
Thank you. Um, so we're going to start off as we're building the queue. There were three members of the public that, that, um, were wanting to participate in, had, had questions specific to the panel. So we're going to start with those folks and then we'll keep going. Um, let's, and, and again, I'm going to be your, you know, we cannot get into the details of specific cases. Um, this is sort of more higher, higher level policy. So we won't be able to answer questions about specific cases, but, uh, and you have three minutes. So with that, let's go with Kenji Scott.
Hello, my name is Kenji Scott. I'm from Baltimore, Maryland. I'm originally from East St. Louis, Illinois. I'm, I'm an advocate here in Baltimore, but I'm usually on the other side of the aisle and I actually have met, uh, advocated for mandatory sentencing and still for penalties because of crime in Baltimore. But a couple of years ago, my cousin changed my mind. He was twenty years old when he was sentenced to twenty-five years in St. Clair County, Illinois. About two years ago, he asked me to advocate on his behalf for resentencing. We have submitted a request to James Gormick, the, uh, state's attorney in, uh, St. Clair County in Belleville, Illinois for resentencing. The first request was immediate denial, saying that the victims, uh, they wouldn't serve the best interest of the victims, but the victim he referred to was the person he went into a robbery with that actually forced him to commit a robbery, to force him to go through with a robbery and a person killed him in the process. And so we, we submitted a second request, uh, to the, uh, state's attorney, letting him know that that wasn't the case. We knew they had not spoke with the witnesses. And so what, what my concern is in this process, what do we do as a family? What do we do as a community? Who are advocating on behalf of family members and friends, uh, to the state's attorney's office to have those sentences reconsidered? When we're getting generic letters that's saying that they had considered and that they had spoke with victims and they haven't spoke, spoke with victims. We, we have reached out to the state's attorney again, uh, just to confirmation to see if they received our second request. They notified us that they have. I want to be a part of whatever we can do. And not only that, we want to solicit as much assistance as we can get to advocate on behalf of Keryon Hammond, because he is definitely the epitome of what we have heard today. He was twenty years old. He was a pretty good kid. This was the first time he had been in any trouble. He has a stellar record even now. And so for me, you know, uh, the statement and it's a question, what do we do as a family? What can we do? Uh, to hold the state's attorney's office accountable for reconsidering these cases since this now is a part of Illinois' law? That's my question and that's my statement.
Um, so, you know, the, the purpose of the task force is to see if there is a way within the bounds of the law to come up with something other than, some other meth, some, some other pathway to resentencing other than, um, through, through the state's attorney. Um, but if, uh, if Kathy or anyone else from the task force would like to respond as well, please do so.
In our outreach to state's attorneys, we've tried to contact a couple of them to see if they had a process. And there are very few of them who do have a public, public process on their websites. But at this point, as far as I know, and again, if there's anyone else on the task force who has better information, there is no specific, um, system or form or anything that you can use. So I think, Mr. Scott, you did all that you could do in reaching out to Mr. Foreman's office.
Yes.
So the, the goal here is to come up with another process, which would have to be passed by the general assembly. So that, that, that is the foundation of our work. Uh, Joby Cates, do you want to add to that?
My guess is, hi, I'm Joby. Um, I'm a member of the task force and I'm also, um, someone who has worked with family members of people who are incarcerated and, and currently now people have come home. And my guess sir, is that many people who are listening in on this call or may read a transcript later want to know exactly what you want to know in, in what Representative Cassidy just shared is a hundred percent true. I would add to that, and this is a simple thing, and you're probably already doing it. So I'm going to say it to everybody else who might not already be doing it, is you're doing a good job of documenting every interaction. Keep that documentation fresh, every email, every phone call, keep a notebook by your phone. Um, earlier in the call, you heard people calling their state reps to ask them to weigh in. No one wants to wait, uh, for a task force to make a set of recommendations to a general assembly that then may or may not vote on those recommendations favorably. So if, if you're in the situation as an individual, you, you can't always rely on, um, a law that was written quite narrowly. And in this case, we're talking about two different laws, and I think people are getting them a little mixed up. The law that passed the same time as the one that created this task force sort of codifies something state's attorneys, for the most part, already had at their disposal, which was the ability to initiate a resentencing. I want to be clear, it does not obligate them to do so, nor does it obligate them to create a reasonable process. It simply codifies their ability to do so. So if you're on this call because you are desperate for information um, about your, how to use this, the, the first one, the resentencing bill that, that sort of codifies what state's attorneys ought to be doing. That law is a positive step, it's a good reinforcement, but it was not a solution and it was not a brand new solution. This, as Kelly, um, as Representative Cassidy just shared, this, this could be, but it isn't. So your job as an advocate for your loved one will continue to be keep on that phone, keep on that email, pushing every avenue, reaching out to every elected official who represents you in your district to make sure that it never gets dropped. The system's never going to move fast enough, so we always have to do both. We have to do the policy work, we have to try to change the law. And at the same time, we have to be fierce advocates for, for our loved ones. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, up next is Darlissa Kendall.
Oh, hi. It's Darlisa.
Darlisa, my apologies.
No, no worries. I'm the mother of Isaiah Brady. My son has been incarcerated since he was nineteen. He's, um, has been incarcerated for twenty-one years now. And I have been, um, a, a advocate with Chicago Alliance, Mothers for Justice, and just advocating to see what can be done to bring these men back in court with these excessive sentences. I know they passed the law for the youth offenders law um, under the age of eighteen. However, it was not retroactive. Uh, again, my son was given consecutive sentencing, twenty-five years for a murder, twenty-five years for the handgun, has been in prison for twenty-one years and has not been rehabilitated. If anything, he has got worse than being in prison, because you adapt to your environment. There is no rehabilitation program from Pontiac State Bill Menard, um, beat, being beat by guards, getting, like the young man said, you, you want, you, my son, um, got out of the gang, he was, and then he was attacked several times. You have to fight your way out. So I don't know. I, I, I guess my question is, how do we get involved with the resentencing project? What does that look like for family members who really don't, don't know at this point where to turn to? Uh, mass incarceration is real, over sentencing is real, and innocent people are being imprisoned. And then they're, they're, they're told to, uh, to just, you know, be quiet and just really, um, you know, you know, don't say anything, but then they're, they're forced to live in that environment and it's just, it's not rehabilitating at all. So I need, I, to know where do I turn for help? And I know Jody, I've, I've spoken with her before. Um, and yeah, that's my question. Like, where do we turn? How do we get this, this done? Where they are actually being heard and their cases are being heard and on an individual basis and not being grouped together as one lump sum? Because there are different cases of each individual prisoner who is in jail. And everyone does not deserve to be in jail for the rest of their life. And anything over forty years for a youth offender is, is a life sentence. You can give them, you, they're nineteen, fifty years, you're getting out at seventy, that's a life sentence.
I hear you. Um, Joby, before, I, I, did you, I saw you go off mute, but I, I want to say, um, we are at our stop time. But I am committed to sticking around to hear from the folks who are, who, who sat through to, to give their testimony. But I'm going to beg you all to be as brief as possible so we can get as many voices heard while people can remain online and hear them. Um, Joby, did you have a response for Ms. Kendall?
I, I, not a, not a long one. I just, I just want to reiterate that this is the process. I mean, there, there isn't a process yet, and that's why it's so frustrating. It's frustrating because it's frustrating, because it's not there yet. Um, there is no answer in this group of people yet. That's what we're building. That's what Representative Cassidy is saying. And that's why being here and sharing, um, learning, really being attentive to the next steps. Because there should be more legislation, but it has to get passed. So participating in that, being part of this movement, it, it, there is no simple answer, and I wish there was. That's why we're here.
Great, thank you. Um, we've, up next is, um, Ashley Banks.
Hello, um, I am advocating for my friend, I have in my background, David Manning. My question, um, and I apologize, I was trying to keep up while I'm working. I'm not sure if it was Joseph James or Nazir that stated their situation was the sentencing of the truth in sentencing, previous law being passed. I'm in a situation where I kind of wanted some advice from one of you guys on which way we should go for him, because I think he fell in the same situation as you guys. He was sentenced at nineteen. One of the laws passed that will allow him to be released sooner or reconsider, or reconsider, um, resentencing. But I kind of don't know which route to take. So I kind of want to know.
Could, could I ask, because we're going to, we, we, we can't get into individual cases as the work of the task force. But if one of the gentlemen wants to go into the chat with you and, and share that advice, that, that would allow us to hear from others about their cases as well. Is that okay with everybody?
You know, that's perfectly fine, because that's all I wanted. I just needed some advice from one of the guys that went through it, basically.
Absolutely. I- is that cool with y'all guys?
I'm not even sure.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. Um, all right, um, back to the queue, um, S.J. McAlpin.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Awesome. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for, um, having this platform. I'm going to make it real brief. I just wanted to say that I am a strong proponent of resentencing. Um, and I ask that the process, uh, definitely include how to evaluate incarcerated individuals who have a history of lifelong history of mental illness. Um, looking at how they can also look at if postpartum, um, illness played a factor in the crime that the incarcerated committed, especially with there being the new law in Illinois. Um, P A, um, one zero zero dash zero five seven four. And also looking at, um, the defendant's inability to pla- to pay for proper defense. Um, and looking in that process, including in that process, if, uh, treatment for mil- mental illness would have been better served versus six years, which is essentially life um, for an individual, um, would have been a more appropriate rehabilitation in the interest of justice. So again, just in short, I just wanted to say that I am strongly, um, advocating reduced sentencing and a evaluation process for women incarcerated under these conditions. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Um, just to, to offer another piece of, of information, um, Ms. McAlpin, we, there's another bill pending in the general assembly. It's, it came out of the House, it's in the Senate, House Bill forty-eight, forty-seven. Um, creates a pathway for survivors of gender-based violence who are incarcerated, um, to petition as well. Um, if you would want, if you want to, um, shoot me an email at repcassidy@gmail.com. I'm happy to walk you through that one.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Um, I didn't know if, if there were any other, um, responses to Ms. McAlpin. Um, with that, um, Ronnie Srelkill? I probably didn't butcher that too badly.
No, thank you. I do that a lot is Srelkill. You pronounced it well.
Thank you.
So thank you. I, I appreciate the opportunity to sit at the table with the SPEC, which is the Sentencing Policy Advising Council and fellow comrades, and also the, my predecessors who were speaking on their experience being incarcerated and is now free. So the letter that I sent you guys last week, I'm just going to read it, it's less than a minute. So first and foremost, I appreciate that Kim Fox hit the mark stating that Illinois is the nation capital for wrongfully convictions and wrongfully sentencing. If it were not for the HB twenty-one, twenty-nine resentencing bill and the release of twenty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-three inmates, justice would co- injustice would continue to have been by blind eye for those incarcerated people unfairly. The HB twenty-one, twenty-nine resentencing bill is important to black and brown offenders, and especially first-time offenders. Most cases are uniquely different and should be treated individually. Immates should have the opportunity to submit their petition for resentencing. There is a lot of money spent on attorneys, by families, and then to find out there's a quota for prisons and conviction quotas, especially during election time. Time and time again, black and brown persons commit crimes versus a white person, the conviction is totally opposite, which is not in favor of the black and brown person receiving decades in prison. It is a call of mass incarceration and it is affecting families horribly. Fathers are gone thirty, forty, sixty years. Judges are serving on a platter. Class M felonies instead of class X felonies, uh, with first degree, um, M, uh, Xs as for first-time offenders. Children's without fathers are more likely to get in gangs, drugs, drop out of school and eventually be incarcerated with their mothers and fathers, which is horrible. Daily, we see how violence has tripled in carjackings, drug overdoses and murders and contributed to the single-family homes affected by incarceration. I am a mother of a son who is housed at Menard Prison. He received thirty years. He was a United States Marines Lance Corporal, Special Forces, Level Three Security, and was wrongfully convicted while home for the holiday trying to save a woman who was being beaten. His case is definitely deserving of resentencing consideration. And the SPEC has the power to bring a positive change to Illinois. I'm a proponent and should be heard and considered regarding my son. I will end this endlessly gratefully and humbled for your consideration. Please, thank you, all of you. I'm sorry, I'm at work.
It's okay. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to join us. Um, I appreciate you making it work. Um, our next witness is Jasmine Smith.
Hello.
Oh, there you go.
Hi, I'm sorry, um.
You're all good.
My name is Jasmine Smith. I am the activist. I'm a part of Chicago Alliance. And I'm And I'm the I'm the advocate for Lester Owens. His MA number is M one five two seven four, and his brother's name is Rico Clark. M MA ID number is M one zero eight three one. And there is also fourteen other survivors that I have I've been advocating for. That's all been wrongfully convicted by Chicago Police Department Sergeant named Brian Brian P. Forberg. Now, on top of them all being wrongfully convicted by this particular sergeant, like we're finding out that the sergeant was also married to we found out also that he was married to um a state a state representative. Outside of him being married to a state representative, some of these guys for the crimes that they've been committed uh committed for has been overly sentenced, and they were sentenced. Some of them were sentenced at juveniles, like Lester Owens, he called his case and and was sentenced at the age of seventeen, and they gave him twenty-four years for aggravated assault with firearm. And and we put in proclamacies and petitions and 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 the governor, the governor denied his case and his brother's case as well. And I'm just basically just trying to get their their stories out here and get any help from anyone who was interested in looking into their cases for them to be resentenced and reheard, and for all of them to be just exonerated, and this corrupt sergeant to be looked into for his wrongful convictions that he put on all of these men. Are you out of court?
Um, if you're not speaking, please um mute yourself.
And I put the story and information in the chat. Um, and that would be all that I have to say uh right now. And my information is, I just added it in the chat, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you guys for the opportunity as well.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you. Um, we're gonna keep going with public testimony. We have Alana Quintana.
Hello, hi, I'm Alana Quintana, and I work at the Institute on Public Safety and Social Justice. I've been working doing trauma-informed group that I think Orlando Mayorga talked about before, Cave Cave Program in Danville for over a decade now. Last week, last Friday, in fact, I had the good fortune of uh bringing Eri Bocanegra to the group and and as a Hispanic Heritage Month speaker at the prison. And in that visit, I just wanted to note that he said that he has been out of prison for um fourteen years now, and he was in prison for fourteen years. But had he been convicted just one year later, when truth and sentencing took effect, he would just be getting out of prison this November. And I would just like to note that in the fourteen years that Eri Bocanegra has been out, he has gone through various iterations of violence prevention work. He has dedicated the whole of his adult life to preventing violence, and he is now a senior advisor for violence prevention in the U.S. Department of Justice to the Assistant Attorney General. So he is doing incredible things for our country, and I I think that that's an amazing story, but there are so many amazing stories that we are choking out because of these extreme sentences. Some of the most zealous keepers of peace and workers in the world who are doing the most incredible things are incredibly motivated because they know what it's like to be tortured and to have their lives just wasted in prison. So if people knew the volume of public money that is being wasted on keeping people locked up who are absolutely no threat to public safety, I would say that all humane people and all taxpayers, maybe that's a Venn diagram, humane people and taxpayers, right? Would demand resentencing, would demand transformational restorative justice programming such as Cave and Healing Beyond Harm, they would demand supportive reentry, they would demand substance abuse and mental health treatment over confinement, and they would definitely stop registries. So that's my two cents. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Um, okay, next we have Angel.
Hi, everyone. Good good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Alicia Gill. I am the sister of Michael Menefield, R five five four eight nine. I'm the founder of Mothers for Justice. I am a member of the Chicago Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression. I am also a member of the Stop Organization, Southside Together Organizer for Power. My brother, Michael Menefield, was wrongfully convicted and received an excessive excessive sentence on April twentieth, two thousand and nine, at the age of twenty-two. Michael Menefield is currently being housed and inhumanely treated by some correctional officers and staffs at Menard Correctional Center. My brother was deprived of his rights to a fair trial by the state's introduction of prejudicial hearsay testimonies. Michael was deprived of his rights to a fair trial based on pervasive misconduct by the prosecutor throughout his trial. For instance, the co-defendant in Michael Menefield's case admitted he gave false statements about Michael Menefield and was given ninety years, but he only served three years. Michael was still given fifty-four uh fifty-four-year sentence for a crime he did not commit, when all evidence, the vehicle, weapon, and cell phone registered back to the co-defendant's mother. Michael was also denied all three appeals and is currently on a federal habeas and and clemency. Michael's defense attorney also failed to provide effective counsel towards Michael's defense. For example, he stated he lost Michael's discovery file, and the egregious egregious fact is that Michael's discovery file should have been stored on a computer. Yet, he said Michael's file flooded in the basement of his home. Since being incarcerated, Michael has achieved many accomplishments. He has certificates of thinking for a change, lifestyle redirection, fatherhood, art roofing, and starting our certificate. He certificates. He has been incarcerated for thirteen years and five months now. He is no longer the twenty-two-year-old man he was and no longer have the same desires or purpose in life. He had plenty of time to reflect, ponder, and think. He found new meaning in life. His desire to obtain a trade, start a new gift gift shop business, speak with the younger generation, hopefully change the path from negative to to positive. And most importantly, start him a family and build memories with his family and children. One second. Michael Menefield and his family is requesting a fair review of his case to be considered for a resentice and or a new trial. Michael Menefield will have a wealth of resources that assure, that will assure Michael will receive training with Dustin Clean, can will receive employment training with Dustin Clean Maintenance Company, Woodline Restorative Justice Hub, Apostolic Church of God, Southside Together Organizer for Power, Chicago Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression, Woodline Resource Center, Woodline Chamber of Commerce, and many more resources for a job. Michael has a huge family who dearly loves him and supports him. Michael also wants to mentor young men to become better young men. Michael has mentally mature and will assure that he will make a successful transition back into society. Thank you all for your time. God bless, Alicia Gill.
Thank you. Uh, could I ask you, um, Ms. Gill, what county that your case was prosecuted in?
Um, it was Cook County, but he's in Randolph County now.
That's where he's incarcerated, but he was prosecuted in Cook?
Yes.
And have you reached out to the Cook County State's Attorney's Office?
Hmm, yes, I went up there twice. Were you talking about Kim Fox's office? Yes, I've been up there twice. Uh, no answer. One time I seen the lady in the office, she went in the back. Um, no, I I have not.
Thank you. Um, there's a message in the chat to me from someone by the name of Christina with some details, and I can't, I won't be able to keep that, so I'm asking you, I'm trying to ask you, but the chat's not working for me. Can you please email that information to repcassidy@gmail.com?
Yes, I don't see, I don't see her email in here.
So I I Christina is somebody who DM'd me in the chat. I'm just saying this to the public, not to to you specifically, Angel, I apologize.
Okay.
Somebody, someone is trying to message me and I can't respond, so I'm asking if they can please just email me at repcassidy@gmail.com.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
No worries, worries. Um, and we have one more witness, Marcus Gill.
Good morning, everyone. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'd like to apologize, but I, it was very important to be on this call this morning. Uh, my name is Marcus Gill, member of Woodline Restorative Justice Hub, Southside Together Organizer for Power. And I stand in solidarity and alliance with precious blood, Mothers for Justice, and also Chicago Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression. I'm on this call this morning in support of the resenticing act. I'm speaking on behalf of my cousin Farah Mohammed, ID number R five zero one one seven. He was incarcerated at seventeen years old. He has been in the Menard Correctional Facility for twenty-three years. Currently, um, doing straight time. I'm speaking on his behalf, um, him him being incarcerated and locked up at an early age. I mean, he was never looked at for the immaturity of his brain um actually being mature enough in regards to the sentences sentencing of his crime. Also during his time while he served in the county before sentencing, prison sentencing, um, the charge that he was actually convicted of, it was at fifty percent. But prior to him being actually convicted, it went to eighty-five percent, which I feel was definitely unjust and unfair to him. And also, incarcerated young men, they don't have the financial capacity and or ability to retain lawyers that's needed to appeal cases and also fight for their freedom. While incarcerated, my cousin has also lost his uncles to death. His mother just recently passed away last year. He was unable to attend his mother's funeral. I have more in-depth information that I sent via email. But I'm just right now driving and I can't read that information off to you all. But I just felt it was real important for me to stand in solidarity with all the Mothers for Justice that's on this call, everybody who have gave their testimonies on this call today, and let you all know that I'm definitely in support of the resenticing bill and act that you guys are implementing in helping these young brothers, especially young brothers of color that's been mass incarcerated. So I stand in support of that and whatever I can do to assure that these young brothers get a second chance. And also a resenticing act, it'd be greatly appreciated. And the Woodline Restorative Justice Hub is a preventative act for young people that's been impacted indirectly or directly by trauma. So we trying to prevent young people from actually going through these situations, even though a lot of the communities that they live in lack the resources needed to be successful citizens in society. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Um, thank you all for sharing your testimony, for sharing your ideas um and your experiences and your work. Um, with that, I can hand it back over to the chair? Is that what I'm supposed to do, Kathy?
Okay. Thank you, Representative.
Thank you.
And thank you all. Um, your testimonies have been riveting. I was particularly um fascinated by the the testimony of the uh impact individuals. And one thing that came through to me um from all of those presenters was the the determination to better themselves and not to succumb to the uh circumstances and conditions that they were confronted with. I also heard from Sister Ryan um, a very subtle technique that that occurs so very much and is provided to the state's attorneys um by statute, and that is the um discretion that they have. And Sister Ryan, if you recall, told us about the young person who had been offered a plea deal, rejected the deal, uh, went to court, was found guilty, and was sentenced to life. Ms. Anderson, the sister of an incarcerated person, touched on that very same kind of discretion and raised the question about, you know, if if the state found the found it appropriate to offer a sentence of sixty-five years, how does that same circumstance now blow up to a sentence of life in prison? And it sort of smacks, perhaps, of a um tax for going to trial. So um, there's a lot of work to be done. I appreciate the work of um Father Kelly and Sister Ryan and and all of the advocacy groups. And I wonder if, as a part of your advocacy groups, if you stress the importance of voting. Now, I don't know if that would have some five oh one C three ramifications or not. But it occurs to me that our work, the work of the task force, will ultimately be presented to a political body, the General Assembly. And the General Assembly is known to respond to the calls of their constituents and the voters. And so the need to vote is so obviously important. Um, I I would hope that it was something that perhaps as individual groups you can advocate as a part of your program. So we have gone beyond our time. I will stop my diatribe. Um, Director Saltmarsh, is there anything I should do or we should do?
No, we can wrap it up and just say thank you to everyone. And our report will be getting published at the end of the year, so keep an eye out.
And that will conclude this meeting. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.